The second plenary meeting of the...
I want to introduce the third meeting of the committee on the 31st of July to the whole world. And now, I would like to present my testimony from the Minbar.
Excellencies, ladies and...
My guests, my ladies and gentlemen. I would like to welcome you all in for the 31st of July committee, which is called the whole world. In order to support the outbreak of COVID-19, it is the first committee of the committee that is supporting the outbreak. We need this moment in order to be aware, because we cannot imagine in this time, the terrible events that will happen. The outbreak has stopped the lives of everyone on the earth and prevented outbreaks of different kinds. From all the diseases that we have seen since 75 years, which originated from the United States' life. This outbreak is the first major disease of the world, but it is also an economic, environmental and human disease. And it is also a disease of the people. We have seen the biggest global pandemic since the greatest epidemic of the world. And the biggest disaster in the 870s since the 1870s. And the global economy has declined by 4.4%. And it is expected that the poorest in the world, for the first time in 20 years, has reached a level of high levels. And 25 million people have been fighting for the poorest. The external trade has stopped and there have been restrictions on travel and trade. And there have been restrictions in the supply and transportation of goods, which restricts women and men in the world. The environment in the world has strengthened. All countries are suffering from the pressure, but those who were deprived of the ship are the ones suffering. So the current human diseases have been affected by the increase of the population by a higher level than ever. Which restricts the life of the poorest in the world. And we have seen a greater threat in the middle of the work to develop the most sustainable system. That is what we have been trying to achieve in order to go back to what we have achieved in the past year. These outbreaks have had a big effect on the majority of the communities, the women, children, the elderly, the homeless, the widows and the seniors. Those who live in the homes of the elderly and the children. And these outbreaks have been fatal, because of the lack of equal opportunities and the problems that affect the people. The household building has led to the increase of the household building and the gendered violence against women. So women have returned to their homes, because they are responsible for carrying the housework. And educating their children in the home. And the young are scared of education and the social services in their communities and the possibility of additional help. And the differences in health care and nutrition in the health sector are being improved. In order to avoid the increase of the population, there are several reasons. You can remember the number difference between the countries that are advanced and the number difference between the areas of the house and the village. In the name of that, the discrimination and the poverty. In the global community, there is no access to internet services, which prevent the children from having to suffer. From each other, including the seniors and the seniors who live far away from their parents. The mental health and the mental health are suffering in a way that is worse. The outbreak and the illegal acts and the acts of racism.
Stereotyping and misinformation have been accompanying the pandemic. Excellencies, this hall is where nations come together, where they unite. This august body, the General Assembly, is the voice, will and conscience of the humanity. The world is looking up to the United Nations for leadership. To step up and take demonstrable action to address the greatest challenge our world is facing today. This crisis compels us to shake up how things are done, to be bold and to restore confidence and trust in the United Nations. No other institution is as far-reaching, as mandated or as normatively better placed. The United Nations must lead on this. This General Assembly Special Session is a historic moment for member states, the United Nations, scientific community and other stakeholders, including the civil society, to hear from each other, engage in dialogue on the multifaceted consequences of the pandemic, as well as on the ways to recover better and stronger. This is not a time to point fingers. We have convened here to forge a path forward and to end the suffering of the people we serve. Since the beginning, I have been convinced that holding this special session was a test for multilateralism, defined by our collective action on the most critical issue of our time. And it is in no way the end of our joint response and recovery from the pandemic. We were not prepared for COVID-19, but we have to be prepared for the next pandemic, climate catastrophe or global recession. Because a crisis of this magnitude will have to meet it when it does. Distinguished delegates, we must be able to rise to the challenge. And our response should not simply target the return to the statist coante. What we need to do is clear. First, we must start with ensuring fair and equitable access to vaccines. Providing everyone with access to COVID-19 vaccines is both the right thing to do and the smart thing to do. From a moral standpoint, we have an obligation to leave no one behind and to protect the most vulnerable. From a practical standpoint, the value of any vaccine is entirely dependent on how many people can get it. So we must strengthen political and resource mobilization for multilateral initiatives that aim towards fair and equitable distribution of COVID-19 vaccine. Secondly, we must work together to protect the most vulnerable countries that are lagging behind. Most notably, LDCs, LLDCs and SIDS. We must ensure that adequate financial resources are available to achieve an inclusive and resilient recovery. We need to join forces to address the challenges of debt vulnerability and diminished fiscal space. I encourage international financial institutions and partner countries to do what they can to ease debt burdens, facilitate investment and leverage development assistance during this crucial period. If necessary, we must pool financial resources to create investment funds. The pandemic has also highlighted that we need more investment in social and health services all around the world. We need to develop projects for social inclusion of the most vulnerable groups. We must ensure universal health coverage. While tackling the immediate consequences of the pandemic, we must also work towards the 17 Sustainable Development Goals, SDGs, uphold our pledge to leave no one behind and ensure that our recovery efforts spur on the SDGs. We do not need to prioritize among these goals. Indeed, the underlying urgency of ending extreme poverty, halting climate change, protecting the oceans or building inclusive societies is more pressing than ever. Investments towards the SDGs can serve as both a means and an end towards a past post-COVID recovery. The environmental root causes must also be addressed. COVID-19 is a zoonotic infectious disease originating from animal populations being placed under severe environmental pressure. This is our last warning. We must get to the bottom of how this happened to ensure it doesn't happen again. We simply have to protect biodiversity and look towards a green recovery. And finally, we must ensure that the policies we implement to combat the pandemic do not undermine the democratic institutions that underpin the long-term health of our economies and societies. Our response to this crisis must be shaped by an uphold respect for human rights. Our policies should be universal, open, transparent, accountable and inclusive. Promoting good governance, respecting the rule of law and allocating resources for the most vulnerable people will in fact support our response to the pandemic by making our societies more equitable and resilient. Excellencies, as a global community, we are at the beginning of the largest socio-economic recovery since the creation of the United Nations. If properly planned and coordinated, our recovery has the potential to jump-start the SDGs, accelerate action on resilient infrastructure, improve access to education and healthcare and better protect the natural world around us. In 1945, skeptics thought that the idea of a multilateral system with an organization of unparalleled legitimacy at its core to be impossible. But even at that time of unimaginable tragedy, the world came together for the sake of humanity. I am sure we will be able to do that once again. Right now, we are all dreaming of the day this pandemic is over. Today, we can take a deep breath of fresh air without fear. Today, we can shake the hands of our colleagues, embrace our families and laugh with our friends. After months of adjusting to life during this pandemic, it would be easy to feel frustrated, but do not be deterred. We are working for you. We are working for the refugees who are taking every precaution to protect their families in camp settings, working for the people with underlying conditions who are self-isolating at home, for the girls and boys who wish above all else to return to school, for the people in line waiting for COVID testing and for those who do not have access to such diagnostics, for the healthcare workers who continue to work tirelessly on the frontline, for the people battling the effects of the COVID-19 disease and for the families around the world who are grieving the loss of their loved ones. The UN is working for you. We are united for you. Stay strong. There are brighter days ahead. I thank you. Before proceeding further, I would like to invite members to stand and observe a minute of silence for all the victims of the coronavirus disease pandemic, including those in our United Nations family. I thank you. I now invite the Secretary-General of the United Nations, His Excellency Antonio Guterres, to make a statement, including in his role as Chair of the United Nations System Chief Executives Board for Coordination.
Mr. President, excellencies, ladies and gentlemen. It is an honor to address this General Assembly Special Session in response to the COVID-19 pandemic. Nearly a year into the pandemic, we face a human tragedy and a public health, humanitarian and development emergency. For the first time since 1945, the entire world is confronted by a common threat, regardless of nationality, ethnicity or face. But while COVID-19 does not discriminate, our efforts to prevent and contain it do. For that reason, the pandemic has hit the poorest and most vulnerable in our societies hardest. It is having a devastating impact on older people, on women and girls, on low-income communities, on the marginalized and isolated. It is presenting new threats to the 2030 Agenda and the Sustainable Development Goals. From the start, the World Health Organization provided factual information and scientific guidance that should have been the basis for a coordinated global response. Unfortunately, many of these recommendations were not followed. And in some situations, there was a rejection of facts and an ignorance of the guidance. And when countries go in their own direction, the virus goes in every direction. The social and economic impact of the pandemic is enormous and growing. Thanks to the hard work and dedication of scientists and researchers from around the world, including those who are with us today, vaccines may become available within the next weeks and months. But let's not fool ourselves. A vaccine cannot undo damage that will stretch across years, even decades to come. Extreme poverty is rising, the threat of famine looms. We face the biggest global recession in eight decades. And these intergenerational impacts are not due to COVID-19 alone. They are the result of long-term fragilities, inequalities and injustices that have been exposed by the pandemic. It's time to reset. As we build a strong recovery, we must seize the opportunity for change. Excellencies, since March, the United Nations System has focused its efforts on helping countries and avoid the worst impact of the pandemic while working for a strong recovery. We have mobilized our procurement and logistics operations to deliver medical equipment and supplies to 172 countries. A large-scale, coordinated and comprehensive health response guided by the World Health Organization aims to suppress transmission of the virus, reduce mortality and develop vaccines, diagnostics and treatments that must be available to all. I have repeatedly called for a COVID-19 vaccine to be a global public good, available to everyone, everywhere. The Act Accelerated and its COVAX facility are the tools to get us there. But there is still a finance gap of $28 billion, including $4.3 billion urgently needed for the next two months. I thank those who have contributed and urge all to show your strong support. Beyond health, I appealed in March for a global ceasefire so that countries can focus on fighting the virus. I echoed this call in my speech to the General Assembly in September and urged new efforts and commitments to silence the guns by the end of the year. I am encouraged by the support this call has received from member states, regional organizations, armed movements and civil society organizations. And I am also encouraged by the response to my call for peace in homes around the world and an end to violence against women and girls. As we mark the 16 days of action against gender-based violence, I urge governments to take concrete steps to make good on the commitments that were made. The United Nations is also strongly engaged in combating misinformation online. Our verified campaign provides compelling, trusted information while offering people tools to identify false content. Excellencies, the United Nations System is mobilized to support countries in addressing the devastating socio-economic, humanitarian and human rights aspects of this crisis. We have extended lifesaving assistance to 63 of the most vulnerable countries through our Global Humanitarian Response Plan. From the start, we have called for a stimulus package worth at least 10% of global GDP and for debt relief for all countries that need it. I welcome the steps that have been taken to help developing countries, but they are totally insufficient for the scale of this crisis. Many low and middle-income developing countries need immediate support to avert a liquidity crisis. They are being forced to choose between providing basic services for their people or servicing their debts. The initiative we launched with the governments of Canada and Jamaica has developed policy options for financing the response to COVID-19 and putting us back on course to achieve these SDGs. And this includes increasing resources available to the International Monetary Fund through a new allocation of special drawing rights to the benefit of developing countries and the voluntary reallocation of unused special drawing rights. I hope the G20 debt initiatives will be broadened so that all vulnerable developing countries are eligible, including middle-income countries that need debt relief. In the longer term, we need a reform global architecture to enhance debt transparency and sustainability. I am pressing for these policies in all my global engagements, most recently at the G20. On the ground, our reformed United Nations country teams, led by a new generation of resident coordinators and largely thanks to the impact of the reform, are being able to support governments in developing national response and recovery plans. Excellencies, looking ahead, the recovery from COVID-19 must address the pre-existing conditions it has exposed and exploited, from gaps in basic services to an overheated planet. Stronger health systems, universal health coverage must be a priority. Since 2007, the World Health Organization has declared six public health emergencies of international concern. COVID-19 will not be the last. We must apply the lessons learned if we are to meet the responsibilities to our children and grandchildren. Social safety nets must work for everyone, too often they fail precisely when they are needed most. A new social contract between people, governments, the private sectors, civil society and more can tackle the roots of inequality with fair taxation on income and wealth, universal benefits and opportunities for all. As we launch economies, new investments must lay the groundwork for sustainable development and carbon neutrality in line with the 2030 Agenda and the Paris Agreement on climate change. We cannot bequeath a broken planet and huge debts to future generations. The money we spend on recovery must go into building a greener, fairer future. And there are hopeful news on the climate front. A global coalition is taking shape for net zero emissions. By early next year, countries representing more than 65% of global carbon dioxide emissions are likely to have committed to carbon neutrality. And this sends a clear signal to markets, to investors and to decision-makers. Act now to put a price on carbon, to end fossil fuel subsidies, to stop constructing new coal power plants and to invest in resilient infrastructure. 2021 must be a leap year, the year of a quantum leap towards net zero emissions of greenhouse gases. And every country should enhance their nationally determined contributions well in advance of COP26 next November in Glasgow and in line with long-term goal of global carbon neutrality by 2050. And adaptation is an essential component of climate action. For least developed countries and small island developing states, it is an existential issue. I appeal to developed countries to fulfill their longstanding promise to provide $100 billion annually to support developing countries in reaching our shared climate goals. Early warning systems, climate resilient infrastructure and agriculture can help avoid future losses while generating gains for biodiversity and other benefits for humankind. We cannot separate climate action from global well-being, particularly biodiversity. It's time to end the suicidal war with our planet. 2021 must be a year to address our planetary emergency. We need a post-2020 biodiversity framework to halt the extinction crisis to be established in Kunming. And we must see urgent action to protect and advance the health of the world's seas and oceans. Overfishing must stop, chemical and solid waste pollution, particularly plastics, must be drastically reduced. We must make peace with our planet if we are to live in balance with its incredible riches. Excellencies, as this difficult year draws to a close, let's resolve to take the tough, ambitious decisions and actions that will lead to better days ahead. In a global crisis, we must meet the expectations of those we serve with unity, solidarity and coordinated multilateral global action. I call on you to take the opportunity of this special session of the General Assembly to confront the COVID-19 pandemic with the urgency it demands, to save lives and to build a better future together. And I thank you.
I thank the Secretary-General for his statement and for taking his time to be with us this morning. The Secretary-General will be leaving after the opening segment for another engagement. In accordance with Resolution 75-4, I now give the floor to His Excellency Minir Akram, Permanent Representative for Pakistan, to the United Nations and President of the Economic and Social Council.
I thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President of the General Assembly, distinguished Secretary-General, Mr. President of the Security Council, Your Excellency, Chair of the Movement of Non-Aligned Countries, Excellencies, ladies and gentlemen. I am honored to be able to speak to the General Assembly's Special Session in response to the coronavirus disease pandemic. The crisis triggered by the COVID-19 is a health crisis, an economic crisis and above all, a humanitarian crisis. Global infections have reached 65 million. One and a half million people have died. We have lost one of our own, Ambassador Toure, the Shajjais Affairs of Guinea. I would like to take this opportunity to express my deepest condolences to his family and the government of Guinea. The economic statistics are equally devastating. A global economic contraction of nearly 5%. Over 60 developing countries need urgent financial help. Five countries have defaulted on debt payments. Twenty countries face acute food security and scarcity. Over 300 million jobs lost. 100 million people pushed back into extreme poverty. Excellencies, confronted by this monumental crisis, the world's response must be equally bold. We must first ensure that a vaccine against the virus becomes available. We must first ensure that a vaccine against the virus becomes available to everyone, everywhere, rich or poor, man or woman, on an equitable basis. Those who are the most at risk, health workers, the ill and infirm, women and children, must receive priority. Advanced purchase agreements for the virus must not be allowed to undermine our collective commitment to equity in vaccine distribution. A collective global commitment to the COVAX and the CTAP facility is indispensable. Governments must also commit to transparency in all matters related to the production, distribution and fair pricing of the vaccine. Second, each government should be encouraged to respond to the people's needs. As the Managing Director of the IMF has advised, countries should spend as much as needed to keep their people alive and their economies afloat. It is evident that the developing countries do not have the fiscal space to finance a recovery from the pandemic. I may mention that later in this session, the Prime Minister of Pakistan, Mr. Imran Khan, will propose an emergency plan for financial support to the developing countries. If there is an economic collapse or a humanitarian disaster in the developing countries, it will halt a global economic recovery and the achievement of the SDGs will turn into a shimer. Excellencies, in deploying resources, governments and international institutions must put people first. No one should be left behind. To lift millions out of poverty and build resilience in our societies, investments in sustainable infrastructure will be vital. Science and technology must be deployed in building back better. Research and development objectives, the international patent regime and the digitalisation of economies should be aligned with the SDGs and climate objectives. I am confident that this special session will contribute significantly to the achievement of these important objectives. Mr. President, I am also confident that ECOSOC, through its forthcoming forum on financing for development next April, the Forum on Science and Technology and Innovation in May and the High Level Political Forum in July, will complement and advance the deliberations and outcomes of this special session to build resilient structures that can recover from the COVID crisis, achieve the SDGs and prevent a climate catastrophe. Mr. President, this is a time for the expression of international solidarity. This is a time for us to turn our nice words into concrete and specific actions. I thank you, sir.
I thank the President of the Economic and Social Council for his statement. Before proceeding further, I have been informed that there is no statement by the President of the Security Council. In accordance with Resolution 75/4, I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of Azerbaijan to introduce the prerecorded statement by the Chair of Movement of Non-Aligned Countries.
I have the honour to deliver this statement. Mr. President, distinguished heads of state and government, ladies and gentlemen. I have the honour to deliver this statement on behalf of one hundred twenty member states...
Mr. President.
There has been a technical difficulty. We're solving it.
I thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I have the distinct honour and privilege to introduce prerecorded statement by His Excellency Ilham Eidaroglu Aliyev, President of the Republic of Azerbaijan, in his capacity as the Chairman of the Movement of Non-Aligned Countries. I thank you.
Mr. President, distinguished heads of state and government, ladies and gentlemen. I have the honour to deliver this statement on behalf of one hundred twenty member states of the Non-Aligned Movement. As we mark the seventy-fifth anniversary of the United Nations, which remains a central multilateral forum for addressing pressing global issues and challenges, we note with regret the emergence of many new areas of concern. These concerns necessitate the renewal of our collective commitment to the values of multilateralism and international cooperation, which underpin the Charter of the United Nations and the 2030 Agenda for Sustainable Development. A good testament of this was overwhelming support by the UN member states for the initiative to convene the special session of the UN General Assembly in response to COVID-19 pandemic put forward by the Non-Aligned Movement. It constitutes, among others, the remarkable success for the member states of NAM since this year also marks the sixty-fifth anniversary of the adoption of Bandung Declaration, which envisaged the promotion of international cooperation for the common prosperity and wellbeing of all. In this connection, I would like to express on behalf of the movement our sincere gratitude for the support extended by the UN member states and the President of the General Assembly. Throughout 2020, the global community has faced the greatest health crisis in recent history, with almost sixty million reported cases and more than one million deaths worldwide as of today, resulting in multifaceted repercussions in health, social, economic and financial spheres, causing disruption of societies and economies as well as to global commerce and travel and making a devastating impact on the livelihood of people. With the aim to contributing the global efforts in addressing the unprecedented universal impact of the pandemic and to find out possible ways to provide a prompt, adequate and inclusive assistance to the member states of the Non-Aligned Movement, Azerbaijan, as the Chair of the Movement, convened the online summit-level meeting of the NAM contact group in response to COVID-19 under the theme "United Against COVID-19" on May 4, 2020. As a practical outcome of this meeting, the member states of the Movement decided to establish the task force in response to COVID-19 and to work out a database on the basic humanitarian and medical needs and requirements of NAM member states in their fight against COVID-19. We are pleased to know that the World Health Organisation uses the NAM database as one of its reference points for identifying the existing needs of NAM member states in addressing the pandemic. The Non-Aligned Movement praises the activities of the United Nations system in response to the COVID-19. We commend strong leadership of the Secretary-General, who played a central role in spearheading the United Nations' global response to the pandemic while at the same time ensuring continuity of operations of the UN Secretariat. The Movement fully supports the WHO and its leadership in their critical role in providing guidance, training, equipment and concrete lifesaving services in order to ensure effective response of the international community to the ever-increasing challenges posed by the COVID-19 pandemic. The pandemic has exposed and aggravated vulnerabilities and inequalities in both developing and developed countries and also among them deepening poverty and exclusion and pushing the most vulnerable even further behind. It is the poorest and most vulnerable who were hit hardest by this pandemic and NAM is gravely concerned that the further impact of the crisis will reverse hard-won development gains and hamper progress towards achieving the Sustainable Development Goals. We also note with concern that the outbreak of the COVID-19 pandemic further exacerbated existing fundamental impediments, which most recently were addressed during the eighteenth NAM Summit in 2019 in Baku, such as impact of global financial and economic crisis, continuing lack of resources and underdevelopment of the majority of the developing world, continuing unequal terms of trade and lack of cooperation from developed countries, the coercive and unilateral measures imposed by some of them, as well as use of force or threats of use of force in the way towards a just and equitable world order. NAM stresses the importance of affordable, unhindered and equitable access by all countries to medicines, vaccines and medical equipment, which should constitute an integral part of a coordinated and effective global response to COVID-19. As many vaccines against COVID-19 are being currently studied, we are all looking forward to the successful outcome of clinical trials and hope that a safe and effective vaccine will soon be available and that they will be considered as global public goods, ensuring the universal distribution at affordable prices for all. We appreciate the coordination efforts of WHO in this process and stress the importance of this organisation in facilitating equitable access of people throughout the globe to such vaccine once it is available. Mr. President, it is through a coordinated and concerted global response based on unity, multilateral cooperation, solidarity and respect for human rights that the international community can craft strategies to mitigate effects of COVID-19 and recover from the pandemic, which currently continues to spread. This special session will serve broad objectives such as reaffirming and strengthening commitment to international cooperation and multilateralism, highlighting best practices as well as challenges to UN member states in responding to the pandemic and reflecting on the central position of the United Nations through providing an opportunity for open and transparent discussions among member states, observer states, observers, relevant UN agencies and bodies and other stakeholders. We look forward to fruitful deliberations throughout this session. Thank you.
I thank the Chair of the Movement of Non-Aligned Countries for his statement. We have heard the last speaker for the opening segment of this special session. Before proceeding to the consideration of Agenda Item 7, entitled "General Debate", I should like, in keeping with the established practice, to invite the attention of the General Assembly to document A/ S31/2/Adendum I concerning Article 19 of the Charter. May I take it that the General Assembly duly takes note of the information contained in this document? It is so decided. In that connection, may I further take it that it is the wish of the General Assembly to follow the provisions of Resolution 75/2, by which the Comoros, Sao Tomo and Principe and Somalia are permitted to vote in the General Assembly until the end of its seventy-fifth session and to also allow these member states to vote at the thirty-first special session? It is so decided. The Assembly will begin its consideration of Agenda Item 7, entitled "General Debate". As members are aware, the Assembly, in its Resolution 75/4, decided, without setting a precedent for future special sessions of the General Assembly, each member state, observer state and the European Union, as well as representatives from relevant organisations attending this special session, can submit a prerecorded statement by their heads of state, of government, head of delegation or other dignitary, which will be played in the General Assembly Hall during the general debate of the special session, after introduction by their representative, who is physically present in the Assembly Hall. In this regard, I would like to address important organisational matters pertaining to the conduct of the plenary meeting. Introduction of the prerecorded statements will be made by the representatives from their national seats. Due to time constraints, it is expected that the introductory remarks will be kept concise. Statements delivered by the representatives who are physically present in the Assembly Hall will also be made from the national seats. As set out in Resolution 75/4, statements in the general debate will be limited to five minutes for individual delegations and seven minutes for statements made on behalf of a group of states. In the case of prerecorded statements, introductory remarks and length of the video itself shall be counted in the allocated time limit. In accordance with Resolution 75/4, without setting a precedent for future special sessions of the General Assembly, in addition to the verbatim records, the President of the General Assembly will circulate as a document of the Assembly, a compilation document of the statements delivered by heads of state and government or other dignitaries by means of prerecorded statements during the special session and submitted to the President no later than the day on which the prerecorded statement is played in the Assembly Hall. Submissions in this regard should be made to a statement@un.org. Addressed by... I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of the European Union to introduce an address by the President of the European Council.
Mr. President, I have the honour to introduce the statement, prerecorded statement, by His Excellency Mr. Charles Michel, President of the European Council.
Excellences, ladies and gentlemen. First of all, I would like to thank the Secretary-General, Antonio Guterres, for having organised this extraordinary summit on COVID-19. The United Nations must be the place where all our positive forces are brought together. It is therefore the ideal place for us to, together, take on board these lessons, the lessons of this ordeal, and draw up plans that enable us to emerge stronger in the future. And I would like to be pragmatic here and launch a concrete proposal. The number of epidemics has increased in recent decades. We knew that the world could potentially be struck by a major pandemic and yet we were caught unprepared. There was therefore a failure of sorts and we need to draw the lessons and the consequences from this. However, there was also a monumental achievement. Vaccines have been developed in less than a year rather than the ten years generally needed. What is the key to this success? Well, it's an unprecedented global cooperation and mobilisation involving the scientific community and industry to which the public authorities have provided the necessary support and funding. The European Union has been at the forefront of this mobilisation. In May last spring, the EU launched a pledging marathon which raised nearly sixteen billion euros in public but also private funds for research to provide universal access to coronavirus treatments, tests and vaccines. The European Union participates in the COVAX facility and we also intend to play our part in facilitating the equitable distribution of vaccines through donations of part of the doses purchased by our member states. The success as regards vaccines is the result of mobilisation... is the result of mobilization and of international solidarity. With a view to future pandemics, we now need to build on this approach, structuring our collective capacity to anticipate, prepare for and manage such crises. I propose that we do so through an international treaty on pandemics. Such a treaty should be agreed within the framework of the World Health Organization, which is the cornerstone of international cooperation against pandemics. It would complement and reinforce our action. The other international organizations and agencies concerned should also be involved. But what should the objective of this treaty be? The objective, in a word, is to do better, to do better in all areas in which we have observed that we need to reinforce our cooperation, and here I would like to mention some of them. First of all, monitor the risks more effectively. We need to develop our knowledge and surveillance of the emergence of infectious diseases in animals, of which the transmission to humans is the foremost epidemiological risk. Secondly, better finance and coordinate research. We have seen how the speed of the financial mobilization was crucial in shortening the time required to produce vaccines. The ACT Accelerator Experience should serve as a model for developing a rapid scientific and industrial response capacity. We also need to alert and share information more effectively. Let us be clear, the COVID-19 pandemic has cruelly exposed the progress we still need to make as regards health risk alerts. A more extensive scale of alert levels may need to be developed. This would increase transparency, and more broadly, it is also the essential basis for effective communication. We also need to improve access to healthcare. As I said just now, the principle of universal access to the new COVID-19 vaccines is fundamental. Our aim must be to guarantee access to vaccines, treatment and tests for future pandemics. This should be laid down in a treaty. We also need to improve resilience. Healthcare systems in rich countries have been put under severe strain. So just imagine then the situation of countries with more fragile healthcare systems. We need to address the global challenge of strengthening healthcare systems in the event of a pandemic. We also need to reflect on how best to secure the supply chains of medical products and equipment. This is a health issue, but also one that is linked to the functioning of international trade. So excellencies, ladies and gentlemen, these then are some ideas that could serve as pointers in negotiating this international treaty on pandemics. I'm launching an appeal. Let us mobilize. Let us pool our experiences, learn the lessons and take the right decisions so that we help make the world and humanity more just and more resilient. Thank you.
I thank the... I wish to thank the President of the European Council of the European Union for the statement just made. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of Malawi to introduce an address by the head of state.
Mr. President, excellencies, colleagues, it is my distinct honor to introduce the statement by His Excellency Dr. Lazarus Chakwera, President of the Republic of Malawi.
Your Excellency Falcon Boskyle, President of the General Assembly, excellencies, ladies and gentlemen. First of all, on behalf of the people of Malawi and people from least developed countries, allow me to express profound gratitude to the current President of the General Assembly for ablely convening this special session on COVID-19 pandemic. We mourn and identify with the global community for the colossal loss of life, the untold shattering of livelihoods worldwide and the incalculable damage to the global economy and civil liberties. Indisputably, the LDCs suffer the worst of the devastation, considering that 35% of LDC populations were living in poverty prior to the pandemic. This session is therefore a clear demonstration of the effectiveness of practical and collaborative adaptation to tough conditions in pursuit of our common interests. Mr. President, the COVID-19 pandemic is a multi-dimensional crisis with grave impacts on poverty, on nutrition, education and health services, resulting in reversal of hard-earned achievements on sustainable development goals. The share of LDCs' exports is sharply contracted. External indebtedness has become a serious concern as government revenues continue to decline while social spending rises. It is increasingly likely that most LDCs will default on their debt repayments. Urgency is paramount here if we were to save our nations and recover whilst building back better towards the 2030 agenda. In this regard, the group of LDCs has issued a statement proposing an immediate global stimulus package for LDCs. I therefore call upon global leaders to respond to our calls and provide support for its implementation. Mr. President, specifically, I wish to make the following calls. First, the immediate highest priority of the world must be saving lives and restoring livelihoods. As a number of COVID-19 vaccines have reached near completion point, we are pleased by the G20 commitment to ensure fair distribution and support towards poor countries. We urge global leaders to declare all successful vaccines and therapeutic medicines as, quote, "the global public goods and common property of humanity", end of quote, to ensure equitable access to these products. This should facilitate extensive immunization against COVID-19, which requires strong collaboration among countries, private sector, civil society, multilateral organizations and other stakeholders. Second, we are encouraged by the G20 commitment on debt restructuring. We reinforce our call to full consolation of all LDCs' debt owed by bilateral and multilateral creditors, including private commercial creditors. Third, activation of the lifesaving finance mechanisms of the International Monetary Fund, IMF, by issuing Special Drawing Rights, SDRs, amounting to 50 billion US dollars, SDRs for LDCs. This should assist us to finance an immediate response to the pandemic. And fourth, development partners must fulfill their commitment of the 0.15% to 0.2% of official development assistance to LDCs with immediate effect. We also call upon the international community to support a robust trading system as a key driver to the post-crisis recovery. In this regard, we are calling for a revitalized global trade framework to maximize the benefits of international trade. Fifth, as the world is fighting the COVID-19, digital connectivity has proven to be a crucial lifeline in maintaining economic and social activities. LDCs need access to modern science, technology and innovation in order to ensure rapid recovery and to build back better without leaving anyone behind. And finally, in order to address the rising global development emergencies, the world must work together for a resilient recovery to attain a higher equilibrium point. We must focus on investing in preparedness and prevention measures. We also need to ensure that our responses are inclusive of the poor and marginalized of our societies. Mr. President, it pleases me to inform you that these priority areas will be the building blocks of the fifth United Nations Conference on LDCs to be held in Doha, Qatar, in January of 2022. I thank you for your attention.
I wish to thank the President of the Republic of Malawi for the statement just made. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of Turkey to introduce an address by the head of state.
Mr. President, I have the honor to introduce His Excellency Mr. Recep Tayyip Erdogan, President of the Republic of Turkey, who will deliver a pre-recorded statement.
Mr. President of the General Assembly, Mr. Secretary-General, honorable Presidents of the Economic and Social Council and the Security Council, distinguished delegates, I greet you respectfully on my own behalf and on behalf of my nation. I wish our meeting to be successful and beneficial for all humanity. The international community is facing the greatest global challenge of the 21st century. The key to overcoming this difficult period is international cooperation and global solidarity. This session is therefore extremely timeful and useful. I would like to thank everyone supporting the organization of this special session, especially my dear brother President Aliyev, who pioneered this initiative as the chairperson of the Non-Aligned Movement and Mr. Boskyle, President of the General Assembly. Distinguished delegates, since the first days of the outbreak, Turkey has acted in cooperation with the international community. In addition to the United Nations, we have been at the forefront of the activities of the World Health Organization, the G20, MIKTA, MITCA, the Turkish Council, the Organization of Islamic Cooperation and other international platforms. To date, we have provided assistance to 156 countries and nine international organizations. We are supporting countries and regions suffering from issues related to food security in pandemic circumstances. We are carrying out special programs in 16 countries for disadvantaged groups such as the elderly, the disabled and orphans. We are conducting training programs in some developing countries for the production of personal protective equipment using local resources. We are trying to provide budget support to some countries facing economic difficulties due to the pandemic. Our private sector also contributes to our efforts in the public sphere. To date, more than 50 Turkish companies have supported the fight against the pandemic in more than 20 countries in various ways. The world has pinned its hopes on the news about vaccine production. I would like to take this opportunity to congratulate, in your presence, Professor Urşayin and Dr. Özdem Turejit, founders of the company BioNTech, who achieved a significant success in vaccine development and are participating online in this session. We are also very pleased that in one of Turkey's 16 vaccine research studies, 12 of which are on the list of the World Health Organization, the phase of human trials has begun. Thanks to the efforts spearheaded by Turkey, the year 2021 was declared the International Year of Health and Care Workers by the World Health Organization. In this regard, I would like to express my gratitude to all health and care workers who are working selflessly all around the world. The World Health Organization's Geographically Dispersed Office for Preparedness for Humanitarian and Health Emergencies was established in Istanbul in September. This office, as a manifestation of Turkey's support for the work of the World Health Organization, will strengthen the efforts aimed at fighting the pandemic. Distinguished delegates, Turkey's strong agriculture, food and manufacturing sectors, city hospitals, experienced and dedicated health workers and comprehensive social security system are our most significant assets in this process. There are vulnerable groups all over the world who are affected much more in this period. The measures must be inclusive and attention must be paid to the needs of the vulnerable and disadvantaged groups. With this in mind, we attach special importance to protecting the rights of women, children, the elderly and the disabled. 3.6 million Syrians under our protection benefit from health services in our country just like our citizens. We are aware that COVID-19 will be with us for a while. Indeed, the increase in number of cases, patients and deaths around the world in recent weeks remind us all of this fact. In this process, it is necessary to combat not only the pandemic but also growing Islamophobia, xenophobia and racism. We have supported from the beginning the Depth Relief Initiative launched by the G20 platform, of which we are a member. I would like to also remind you that we must accelerate our efforts, including the development of sustainable supply chains and distribution networks to ensure the transition to the new normal. Another matter that the pandemic reminds us of is that the United Nations system must be reformed according to today's threats and needs. I believe that the General Assembly must be strengthened to make the United Nations system more effective, democratic, equitable and transparent. As I conclude my remarks, I hope that this special session will give impetus to the international community's fight against the pandemic. I would like to thank everyone taking part in the conduct of the program and extend my most heartfelt greetings to all of you once again. I wish you the best of health.
Monsieur le Président. Mr. President, I am happy to announce the speech of the President of the Swiss Confederation. It's a particular honor to be able to announce a feminine voice amongst the leaders of the world. President of the General Assembly, ladies and gentlemen. It's almost a year now that our lives were turned upside down by COVID-19. This invisible enemy has shown the interdependence and the vulnerability of our societies. Switzerland has also been very much affected by this virus. It knows no borders. Today, I would like to stress the three following points. First of all, as we celebrate the 75th anniversary of the United Nations more than ever before, we can now show the role and the unique value of multilateralism. Switzerland, as the host country of the operational heart of the United Nations and the WHO in Geneva, plans to strengthen its functioning. The current crisis confirms to what extent a universal approach and coordinated approach to health is necessary with a strengthened WHO. to health is necessary with a strengthened WHO to face up to the global health emergencies. Secondly, this crisis shows the links between the economy and health. It's essential that we invest in strengthening our healthcare systems so that we can prevent these kinds of crises in the future. To invest in prevention costs less than to react to a crisis. Thirdly, despite the imminent arrival of a vaccine, we cannot allow ourselves to go back to the situation before the crisis. Today, we have an opportunity to move towards a model of a more inclusive, resilient, and sustainable society in line with the 2030 Agenda for Sustainable Development and the multilateral agreements on the environment such as the Paris Climate Agreement. Ladies and gentlemen, protecting the health of everyone is a common responsibility. As a country, it's our responsibility to further strengthen the international health regulations together with our partners of the coalition to ensure that we can protect health. Switzerland is committed to this. Switzerland supports research and development for a vaccine that will be safe, accessible, and fairly distributed across the world, particularly supporting the organizations that are involved in the ACT Accelerator program. We plan to make COVAX a success for everyone. Switzerland also supports the global response to the economic and social aspects of the crisis. We are providing funding of more than $1 billion to the Fund to Reduce Poverty and Increase Growth of the IMF, and we also support the G20 and Paris Club initiative to temporarily suspend the debt servicing of the poorest countries. Moreover, Switzerland provides $400 million to international action. These contributions of states and actions of states are important, but only solidarity, international cooperation, and multilateralism will enable us to together overcome the pandemic. Thank you for your attention.
I wish to thank the President of the Swiss Confederation for the statement just made. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of Honduras to introduce an address by the head of state.
Señor President. Mr. President, I have the great honor of introducing a pre-recorded statement by Juan Orlando Hernández Alvarado, President of the Republic of Honduras. 2020 has been an intense year, difficult to forget. Pandemic and two destructive storms that have left us in tatters. The COVID-19 pandemic has affected all nations around the world, perhaps harsher against those that have less resources and have more vulnerable populations and with weak healthcare systems. Honduras has confronted the pandemic with determination, taking measures early that slowed down the spread of the virus, so that allowing us time to strengthen our healthcare system and making sure that the demands don't exceed our ability to provide services. Now, this, of course, focuses on generating income and the possibility of providing food and other basic needs, and our economy, obviously, has been affected to a large extent. The need for work, a decent income, food, housing, and urgent needs are what has been most affected. Our country is located in a high-risk area with regard to climate change and its effects, and this past November, we've suffered consequences of two devastating hurricanes, two hurricanes during the same month. The most productive region of the country, agricultural and industrial part of the country, is still flooded. The water level has not dropped, and there are still families waiting to be rescued, and thousands are in shelters, need to be resettled. We still don't have the exact numbers of the types of destruction caused by the two hurricanes, and this is a job that we've asked Eklok. But we know that already that almost 4 million people, in other words, almost half of the population of Honduras, has been affected due to the devastation of these two phenomena. More than 65,000 homes have been affected. Making them inhabitable once again will require significant investments, and it's also painful to see how these families have lost everything they've owned or collected over their entire lives. It's painful and unfair. Honduras is not responsible for this climate change. The responsibility falls on the industrialized countries and on their CO2 emissions. We are, countries such as Honduras, are paying the bill. Our population has been severely affected, and our productive infrastructure has been devastated by this. There are a lot of roads, bridges, schools, hospitals, public and private buildings have been destroyed. This is a setback of years and years, because if we don't count with the support of the international community, all the work that we've been doing to rebuild over the past 22 years after the last terrible tragedy that Hurricane Mitch left behind, it will be very difficult, not to say impossible. Our country is on the verge of bankruptcy. In spite of the severity of the situation, we haven't lost hope and optimism. We're working on a reconstruction plan. With the participation of different sectors of Honduran society and with the support of the international community, we have worked to deal with the three serious external crises that have affected us this year. This is a situation that never in our history before occurred to Honduras. The Honduran government, since the beginning of the pandemic, and in coordination with the WHO, the Pan-American Organization of Health, and Sinaheer, the system of national risk management, has adopted a contingency plan and has had an active participation at the international level to access biosecurity supplies, medical equipment, and medication to contain COVID-19. Honduras has confirmed its commitment to the efforts of the United Nations in combating COVID-19. We support the Secretary-General's initiative for a global ceasefire to allow humanitarian assistance to reach those in particularly need, especially the most vulnerable, those who are in conflict areas. Honduras co-sponsored the first resolutions presented in the General Assembly on COVID-19, global solidarity against COVID-19, and international cooperation to ensure global access to medication, vaccines, and medical equipment to face COVID-19. These were adopted by consensus. On the 11th of September of this year, Honduras supported the adoption of resolution entitled Omnibus Resolution, Omnibus Comprehensive Resolution in Coordination in Response to the COVID-19 Pandemic. We also thank the COVID-19 Recovery Fund. Thanks to that, the United Nations approved a project to the tune of $1 million aimed at strengthening our healthcare system and our capacity of our laboratories in Honduras. Honduras has accomplished, has joined the GAVI-COVAX alliance, which ensures that we'll have access to vaccine against COVID-19 for 20% of our population, based on the response we received from Dr. Seth Berkley, Executive Director of the Alliance GAVI. The other vaccines against COVID-19 that the country has requested will be acquired with the rest of Latin America through the revolving fund of the Pan-American Healthcare Organization. To date, 32 countries of the region have joined this collective effort. The Honduran government is making appeal to the international community to continue strengthening the financial fund of the GAVI-COVAX fund, which is an important mechanism promoted by the WHO to guarantee access to vaccines against COVID-19 to the most vulnerable countries, and we're very grateful for it. The Honduran government expresses its deep gratitude to the governments of friendly countries and the organization of the United Nations Systems, various international organizations, for the constant solidarity with the Honduran people during the pandemic and more recently during the ETA and IOTA hurricanes. We are grateful for the deployment of the Disaster Assessment and Coordination Team to support dealing with the impact of ETA and IOTA storms. Also, the United Nations Central Emergency Response Fund has provided support to us. They have allocated $3.9 million to support people affected. Also, a flash appeal has raised $69.2 million to provide a response to the humanitarian needs, in particular, healthcare, water sanitation, hygiene, shelter, and education. The United Nations and the international community have to keep in mind that middle-income countries like Honduras are particularly vulnerable, and it needs to support the ambitious but fair initiatives for revision of the arrangement for cooperation that includes creative measures by international financial organizations such as the Inter-American Development Bank, the World Bank, and the IMF. In order for us to have access to reconstruction funds, Honduras reiterates its call to eliminate family remittance taxes during the crisis. Honduras has been considered as one of the most vulnerable countries to climate change in the world over the past 25 years, which has been demonstrated by lengthy droughts and also the recent passage, not of one but two devastating hurricanes that turned into massive storms. Once again, we would like to make a call for action by the Climate Green Funds. This is extremely urgent. It's a topic that can't wait any longer. This is why we request rapid actions and without bureaucratic red tape. Honduras is already a victim of severe climate change, and it doesn't seem to be improving. Quite to the contrary, it's getting worse. This is why green funds are urgently required to tackle the disaster, to create an opportunity to deal with the humanitarian emergency, also to create an opportunity to compensate damage, and of course, to take mitigation and adaptation actions. These emergencies have put to the test and overcome our capacity, and the damage is colossal, which is why Honduras has launched an SOS to the entire world. We ask the international community not to leave us alone. We have been the country that is most affected in the region, and Central America is the region that has been most affected by hurricanes, droughts, fires. We appeal to the permanent solidarity of the international community for an immediate assistance and to help us rebuild to this economic damage caused by the COVID-19 pandemic has been added. So it's a situation that greatly exceeds the country's own resources to deal with this emergency. This is why the solidarity of our friends and of the entire world will be extremely necessary, as well as the responsibility of those who have signed climate change agreements. Thank you very much.
I wish to thank the President of the Republic of Honduras for the statement just made. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of Azerbaijan to introduce an address by the head of state.
Mr. President, it is my great honor and privilege to introduce pre-recorded message by His Excellency, Mr. Ilham Heydaroglu Aliyev, President of the Republic of Azerbaijan, in his national capacity. I thank you.
Mr. President, Mr. Secretary-General, distinguished heads of state and government, I wish to express my gratitude to the Secretary-General, Mr. Antonio Gutierrez, and the President of the General Assembly, Mr. Volkan Boskirk, for their efforts in the organization of the special session of the General Assembly in response to the COVID-19 pandemic. Azerbaijan, as a chair of the Non-Aligned Movement, initiated holding of the summit of the contact group of the Non-Aligned Movement in response to coronavirus on May 4, 2020. During the summit, I suggested the convening of the special session of UN General Assembly in response to coronavirus at the level of the heads of state and government. All 120 Non-Aligned Movement members supported this proposal. It reaffirmed the commitment to Bandung principles. Overall, more than 150 UN member states supported this initiative. Azerbaijan has taken timely and necessary preventive measures to stop the spread of the virus. We have taken adequate actions in response to the emerging situation with regard to COVID-19. The government has released the Social, Economic, and Financial Support Package worth over $2.5 billion to counter the negative impact of pandemic. The social support measures cover nearly 5 million people, which is half of country's population. The World Health Organization named Azerbaijan an example in the fight against the pandemic. We have made two voluntary contributions to the World Health Organization in the amount of $10 million. In the meantime, to date, Azerbaijan has provided humanitarian and financial assistance to more than 30 countries. Mr. President, Azerbaijan supported the initiative of the Secretary-General on a global ceasefire during the pandemic. However, this call remained unheard by Armenia. During the last two years, Armenia deliberately destroyed the negotiation process. Prime Minister of Armenia made a number of provocative statements, like Karabakh is Armenia, which put an end to negotiations. In July 2020, Armenia perpetrated military provocation along the state border. In my statement during the general debate of the General Assembly on 24th of September, I warned that Armenia is preparing for a new war. On September 27, Armenia launched large-scale military aggression against Azerbaijan. During 44 days, armed forces of Armenia heavily shelled Tartar and other cities of Azerbaijan. Armenia fired ballistic missiles against Genja, Berda, Mingachevir, Kabala, Siyazan, and other cities which are far away from the front line. They used heavy artillery, ballistic missiles, wide phosphorus, cluster munitions to cause mass casualties and forced displacement among Azerbaijani civilians. 94 civilians, including 11 children, were killed, more than 400 wounded. Azerbaijani army responded adequately and defended its citizens and territory and launched successful counterattack operation, which resulted in liberation of the large part of our occupied territories. Military victory of Azerbaijan during the military operations forced aggressor to surrender and led to signing the Trilateral Statement of the Presidents of Azerbaijan and Russia and Armenia's Prime Minister on November 10, which provided liberation of other occupied territories. Turkey and Russia play an important role in ensuring ceasefire through Joint Ceasefire Monitoring Center. Thus, Armenia-Azerbaijan Nagorno-Karabakh conflict was resolved by military political means. In the absence of compliance with the international law, it was inevitable to ensure the implementation of Security Council resolutions by force, as a result of which the aggressor state was enforced to peace. It was not the only destructive attitude of Armenia. Armenia was the only country to oppose the initiative of holding the special session. I believe the special session will contribute to the global fight against pandemic and will make will make us more united around our common goals. Thank you.
I thank the President of the Republic of Azerbaijan for the statements just made. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of Tunisia to introduce an address by the head of state.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have the pleasure of introducing the pre-recorded statement by the President of Tunisia. Mr. President, Secretary General, Your Excellencies, ladies and gentlemen. Allow me right off the bat to thank the President of Azerbaijan and Chair of the Non-Aligned Movement for his initiative in convening on behalf of the member states of the Non-Aligned Movement this extraordinary session of the General Assembly, special session of the General Assembly that is dedicated to the COVID-19 pandemic. I would also like to thank His Excellency and Mr. Antonio Gutierrez, Secretary General of the United Nations, for his initiatives in uniting international efforts in order to put an end to this pandemic, which threatens the health of populations around the world and whose impact has threatened international peace and security, Mr. President. Since the start of this pandemic, Tunisia has always stressed the importance of a coordinated international response based on solidarity in order to confront this pandemic. It will be difficult to contain this pandemic if we all acted separately. This is why Tunisia has advocated for a coordinated approach that takes into account the needs of countries and peoples around the world. And to give a concrete expression to this vision, Tunisia has taken initiative as a non-permanent member of the Security Council to introduce a draft resolution in coordination with France, a resolution that was adopted unanimously as a resolution 2532. This resolution is a decisive turning point in the history of the United Nations. Indeed, this resolution makes it possible to expand the concept of collective security to include in that concept a sanitary dimension that could also be a threat to international peace and security. And it, the resolution has allowed the member states of the Security Council to adopt a common vision, to embrace a common vision on our collective responsibility to uphold peace and to freeze all military operations around the world and institute a ceasefire, a global ceasefire, establish a humanitarian truth in conflict areas, Mr. President. Tunisia welcomes the efforts of the United Nations and its various agencies to, in containing this crisis and mitigating its impact. Now, we do think that we still need a plan that responds to the needs of everyone involved. And bearing that in mind, Tunisia would like to reiterate its appeal to a veritable surge of international solidarity in terms of easing the debt burden and easing the economic and financial pressure. And we would like to stress the need to ensure equitable access to a vaccine as soon as it is available. We need to redefine our priorities in the area of international cooperation and to provide appropriate support, support that is, that reflects the extraordinary circumstances that we are facing and to ensure food security and sustainable means of production and consumption as well as effective systems of social protection and a universal sanitary coverage, without, of course, forgetting the need to respect the human rights of everyone. We believe that the, this kind of meeting, this kind of session is an excellent opportunity to, to flesh out the concept of collective security in order to support multilateralism and to engage in discussion on the means of improving governance for a better future for future generations. Thank you very much for your continued attention. May the peace of God be with you. Thank you.
I wish to thank the President of the Republic of Tunisia for the statement just made. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of Cuba to introduce an address by the head of state.
Mr. President, I have the honor to present the video statement of the President of the Republic of Cuba, Mr. Miguel Diaz Canal Bemides. Secretary General, Mr. President, distinguished heads of state and government, heads of delegations, I would like to thank the Republic of Azerbaijan, the current president of the Non-Aligned Movement, for the initiative to convene this special, special session of the General Assembly. An articulated response to the COVID-19 pandemic and its consequences, consistent with the protocols and good practices established by the World Health Organization, can only be promoted at the global level by this body, which is the most universal and representative of the United Nations system. It is a sad and undeniable fact that the pandemic has exacerbated the serious problems and colossal challenges that humanity had already been facing before the outbreak of this disease. We are referring to the wars, including non-conventional wars, the use and threat of use of force and the implementation of unilateral coercive measures, but also about the absence of precarious and precarious situation of health services, education, and social security under the blind rules of the market and the unequal exchange that has prevailed in the world. The signs of what some experts have described as the worst economic recession since the Second World War have become dramatically visible today, and no one doubts that the brunt of the crisis will be borne by the countries of the South, which are already affected by the abuse of neoliberal policies that has amplified the ravages caused by poverty. The foreign debt of developing countries, which has been paid several times before, has grown bigger as a result of the pandemic. Thus, cutting short the aspirations of economic and social well-being, it's unpayable and should be canceled. Under the present circumstances, the establishment of a just, democratic, and equitable international order is an imperative. It is a condition for the survival of the species in an ever-more interconnected and paradoxically unequal world. The COVID-19 pandemic has laid bare the human cost of that inequality and has revealed the urgent need to strengthen national health systems, promote universal and free access to basic medical services, and guarantee an equitable distribution of vital resources. The world watches in shock, for example, at how the United States, responsible for thirty-eight percent of the global military budget, is unable to take responsibility for the more than eleven million infected persons and the more than two hundred and thirty-eight thousand dead from COVID-19 in that country. When looking at the harsh situation caused by infections, new outbreaks and the collapse of health services in nations with an enviable prosperity, one question arises: Why is the enormous budget that is currently being poured into the arms race not being used instead to confront this and many other older pandemics such as hunger and poverty? Mr. President, since the emergence of the SARS-CoV-2 virus and a view of the possibility that it could become a pandemic, Cuba designed a national program aimed at its prevention and control. Its implementation is supported by the strengths of our country's health system of proven quality, quality standing, providing universal coverage and scientific development. Today, in a spirit of modesty but also pride, we can explain how we've done this. In Cuba, we implemented a government management system based on science and innovation, which has enhanced the interconnections between knowledge, production, and social services. This is an inclusive, participatory, systemic, cross-cutting, and intersectional system that crystallizes and achieves its best results in the robust protocols applied in coping with the COVID-19 pandemic and the responsible attitude adopted by our people. In other words, what we do is to give practical expression to the way in which the social system operates in Cuba and is capable of solving or successfully tackling very complex problems, while human beings are the top priority of the government's work. The role of science and its articulation with government management has been crucial. The relevant achievements attained by the medical and pharmaceutical industry and biotechnology allow us to be in a better position to cope with the disease. Two Cuban candidate vaccines that are currently going through the clinical trial phase have been included among the forty-seven registered by the World Health Organization. Faithful to our humanist vocation, fifty-three Cuban medical brigades have helped to cope with the disease in thirty-nine countries and territories, which joined those that were already offering their services in fifty-nine nations. That has been possible even under the heavy burden of the criminal and unjust blockade imposed by the government of the United States, which has been tightened in an unprecedented way, and there's also been a cynical smear campaign launched against our international medical corporation. Here, we denounce this aggressive behavior against Cuba and other sovereign nations, as well as the announced attempt to reenact the Monroe Doctrine, which is a violation of international law and the proclamation of Latin America and the Caribbean as a zone of peace. Our commitment to the purposes and principles of this organization remains unaltered. We remain firmly and resolutely committed to working in favor of multilateralism, solidarity, human dignity, and social justice. This global emergency caused by the COVID-19 pandemic sounds like a new call for global awareness. This time, we should listen to it. Yes, we can. Cuba is proof of that. Thank you very much.
I wish to thank the President of the Republic of Cuba for the statements just made. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of Peru to introduce an address by the head of state.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have the honor of introducing the pre-recorded statement of His Excellency, Francisco Sagasti, President of Peru. Mr. President, the unprecedented global crisis created by the COVID-19 pandemic has now, is now witnessing renewed outbreaks and continuing impact on our lives, health, and the economy of our societies, which forces us to increase our efforts to develop together effective and timely solutions. The pandemic has highlighted inequalities and has reversed years of progress in, in most countries that we had made in implementing the 2030 Agenda and the Sustainable Development Goals. For the first time this century, levels of poverty are increasing, and the global recession will plunge millions of people into extreme poverty. This year, the United Nations are commemorating seventy-five years of its existence due to the collective will of many states, including Peru. This year, we, as we recognize its strength and its capacity for collective mobilization, the UN has once again, is being put to the test in confronting this virus, which has already taken over one point three million lives and has infected more than fifty-nine million people around the world. Mr. President, in a situation such as this, an unprecedented situation, all countries around the world are confronting two disasters at the same time. An accelerated disaster, the pandemic COVID-19, which has devastated the entire planet in just a few months, and also a disaster in slower motion, not that slow, but slower, climate change, which is, threatens humanity at the planetary level. The magnitude of these challenges represented by these two disasters is also an opportunity to implement innovative solutions in all areas and to correct inequalities, deficiencies, and the lack of social protection that have been ignored for so many years. And bearing this in mind, Peru would like to reiterate its appeal to declare vaccines against COVID-19 as global public goods. This is an idea that has also been endorsed by the Secretary General. Universal, timely, and equitable access to vaccines, medications, treatment, and the necessary equipment will be essential to comply, to meet the commitment of the 2030 Agenda to leave no one behind and to first reach those who are lagging behind and are the most vulnerable. Now, based on this conviction, Peru joined the COVAX Facility Initiative led by the World Health Organization and the Vaccine Alliance GAVI and the Coalition for Epidemic Preparation Innovations, CEPI, in order to ensure the health and physical integrity of the Peruvians in this time of, in this period of COVID-19 pandemic. Now, to tackle jointly the pandemic and the climate crisis together, allow me to just list a number of initiatives that Peru considers as a priority. First of all, we need to bridge the multilateralism divide. These crises require global responses to confront them based on a robust and efficient multilateral system. It's important to strengthen the multilateral architecture of health, healthcare based on the World Health Organization, which is the leading agency of international sanitary efforts. We need to ensure that it has the necessary financial resources, in particular, non-conditioned resources, that allow it to implement its mandates in an independent and effective manner. Secondly, we need to bridge social divides. We need to build societies that are more just, more inclusive, and more sustainable, and this requires greater efforts to provide universal healthcare, global food security, quality education at all levels, a free flow of food supplies, goods, and services, provision of basic services without discrimination, gender equality, and the empowerment of women, as well as a, an environmental transition that focuses on the creation of green an environmental transition that focuses on the creation of green jobs and healthcare systems that are capable to adapt to climate change. And thirdly, Mister President, we need to bridge the knowledge gap. The disasters of Covid nineteen and climate change have made us understand clearly that the capacity of generating and using scientific and technological knowledge is essential. It's extremely important to understand the nature of these disasters and to design and implement appropriate responses. However, international inequality around the world in these capacities is much greater than the inequality in income or in wealth. This requires a massive multilateral effort to reduce, to bridge these inequalities in the ability to generate and use knowledge and to provide lower-income countries with the resources to train their people at the highest level to finance scientific research, technological development and innovation. We'd like to make an appeal to international financial institutions to promote financing and investment mechanisms in developing these capacities. And to confront all these collective challenges, you can count on the unequivocal commitment of Peru. Thank you very much.
I wish to thank the President of the Republic of Peru for the statements just made. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative for the plurinational state of Bolivia to introduce an address by the head of state.
Thank you very much, Mister President. I have the honor of introducing the pre-recorded statement by his excellency, President of the plurinational state of Bolivia, Luis Arce Gatacolla. Mister Secretary General Antonio Guterres, Mister President of the General Assembly, Volkan Boskir, distinguished heads of state and government of the member states of the United Nations. As my first participation as the President of the plurinational state of Bolivia in this important forum, I would like to reaffirm the commitment of my country to multilateralism and the principles enshrined in the UN Charter. At the same time, I would like to convey to you that on the eighth of November, Bolivia reaffirmed its commitment to democracy. And today, I have the honor of leading a government that enjoys the confidence and legitimacy that has been expressed through the votes of the Bolivian people. Now, I'd like to focus on the topic that brings us here. I'd like to thank Azerbaijan in its capacity as the Chair of the Bureau of the Non-Aligned Movement for the initiative of convening this meeting, United Against Covid Nineteen. Exactly a year ago, Covid nineteen was an unknown virus that was distant from our reality. There are many theories that are being discussed by the scientific community regarding its emergence and possible cure. However, the reality is that all countries around the world have been swept up by this pandemic and in particular, the most vulnerable countries and those in special situations. This is why this forum is so important, because individual and isolated efforts by countries are not going to resolve the sanitary crisis. Only through the joint efforts by countries, all countries and various specialized organizations in this area will we be able to do that. Mister President, the political crisis of November of twenty nineteen in Bolivia and the ineffectual administration of the government at the time led to a deterioration of the Bolivian economy, which was aggravated by the pandemic and thus put at risk the major social progress that had been achieved over the fourteen years of administration by a democratically elected government. According to data of ECLAC, Latin America and the Caribbean is expected to experience a contraction of economic activity in twenty twenty. The regional GDP will drop by nine point one percent. In my country, GDP will drop by eleven point one percent. This, of course, leads to an increase in unemployment, poverty and inequality. It's a situation that clearly represents a step back with regard to the prior economic performance when our country led South America in economic growth between two thousand six and two thousand nineteen. Now, my government is focused on returning to the path of economic stability and growth, ensuring continuity to the community-based productive system of economic and social development to restore to the Bolivian people the well-being that was brutally taken away from them in November twenty nineteen. Now, in the framework of, to do this in the framework of the response to the pandemic and to prevent renewed flare-ups, we are making special efforts to acquire safe vaccines and to provide them freely to three million Bolivians. This includes the most vulnerable groups and healthcare workers. Our goal is to achieve this target during the first quarter of twenty twenty-one and without a doubt, cooperation of international organizations, the UN, of specialized agencies and of friendly countries will be essential to achieve this goal. Mister Secretary General, heads of state and government, this pandemic has highlighted massive inequalities and vulnerabilities both in developing countries and in developed countries, but the impact has not been the same. There have been inadequate healthcare systems, gaps in social protection, structural inequalities, environmental deterioration, and of course, the climate crisis. All this have laid bare the fragility of entire population groups in our countries. And precisely, the eradication of poverty and extreme poverty continue to be major challenge and one of the priorities for my government. Today, more than ever, the twenty thirty agenda for sustainable development requires complying with international commitments with regard to financing for development, to which can be added financing needs to confront the consequences of the pandemic and transfer of technologies. In this context, we hope to be able to count on the due comprehension and solidarity in international cooperation, in particular, official development aid. It's essential to mobilize different sources and instruments of financing and forgiveness of external debt. This situation requires solution with a systemic approach that takes into account the impact on prices of raw materials and international trade, stability of supply chains and income from tourism, levels of remittances, employment and fiscal receipts. Changes in all these economic variables, especially for developing countries, could put many of these countries at the risk of of taking on too much debt, both internally and externally. In the face of this situation, it's important to ensure mechanisms of easing the debt burden and international financial organizations must continue to provide liquidity and debt forgiveness. Mister President, current challenges require close cooperation among states. In a world of interconnected threats, solidarity must be in the interest of all states and all international actors. Any situation must be dealt with through multilateralism. Therefore, Bolivia would like to reaffirm its determination to work with the international community, always respecting the principles of solidarity, equality among states, the self-determination of peoples, national sovereignty, territorial integrity and political independence. Thank you very much.
I wish to thank the constitutional president of the Republic of the plurinational state of Bolivia for the statements just made. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of Ecuador to introduce an address by the head of state.
Thank you, Mister President. I have the honor to introduce the pre-recorded message of the President of the Republic of Ecuador, Lenin Moreno Gases. Mister President of the General Assembly, Secretary General, heads of state and government, please accept the heartfelt greetings of the Ecuadorian people. Dear friends, this meeting and all those that we have held over recent months have one common denominator, namely, understanding that international cooperation has never been as necessary and important as it is today, as it is now. If we don't strengthen multilateralism, there will be no way to put the brakes on the dramatic effects of the pandemic. We won't have the capacity to provide a comprehensive response to a threat that is not only a health threat but also an economic, social and political one. The pandemic has had unprecedented effects and not all countries have had the same capacity to respond effectively to its impacts. This is why we insist so much on timely and efficient assistance in a spirit of solidarity. To whom? Well, to the economies that are least developed and to middle and low-income countries. It's fundamental that donor countries intensify their efforts to provide development assistance. Of course, I'm referring to those that have not yet done this because for those that have, to them, we're very grateful. In crises as difficult as this one, the support of international financial organizations means not only solving lives but also ensuring the survival of entire peoples. In the case of Ecuador, the support that we received made it possible for us to face the most difficult days of this pandemic. And today, as the reactivation of our economies is in full swing, the loans on excellent conditions that we receive were fundamental in order to protect employment and dollarization. The people of Ecuador are very grateful to you for this. Fellow mandate holders, the history of humanity will have a before and an after Covid. Unfortunately, the after period will include poverty, unemployment and inequality, as happened after the war. If we don't reactivate immediately technological and technical and economic resources, it will be very difficult to recover. The recovery will be very difficult and long, three or four years. And probably, we won't be able to achieve these Sustainable Development Goals and maybe on some of them, we will backtrack on those that we had achieved. The pandemic worsened inequality in various aspects and it laid bare once again the economic and technological gaps existing throughout the world. As always happens, those most affected have been those that are the most vulnerable because today, technology is the basis for access to telemedicine, tele-education and tele-working. Covid also revealed the dual vulnerability of women, children, older persons, persons with disabilities and indigenous peoples and migrants. The loss of employment, violence within the family, poverty have all increased during lockdown and have worsened dramatically the situation for these groups of people. To this, we must, we must protect them and we must guarantee their rights today. They need us more than ever before. Ecuador supports the work of the World Health Organization and its leadership shown during this emergency. Its coordination will be a determining factor in ensuring access for everyone to the Covid nineteen vaccines and also access to patent-free technologies for medicines that can be distributed in a fair manner. The only way that we can overcome the pandemic and its effects will be to work together in a coordinated and integrated manner. Now is not the time for geopolitical battles. It's a time for solidarity and cohesion to facilitate access to humanitarian aid for our peoples. The pandemic should be an additional reason to speed up the obligations of disarmament and to free up resources that are so necessary for our economic recovery. It is a moral obligation, our moral obligation, to re-channel our efforts to address Covid nineteen. This is our common enemy. The seven point seven billion inhabitants of the world need us to be united and they are calling for urgent action to be taken by everyone. This is the time to demonstrate that the reasons that justified the creation at the time of the United Nations organization and above all, to demonstrate that this body is effective when the global community needs it. Friends, heads of state, the pandemic has cost the lives of more than one million three hundred thousand people. Let us not allow that figure to increase. The destiny of humanity depends on our response, that it be rapid and efficient and the correct one. Let us not disappoint our peoples. They are depending on what we do. But above all, let us not disappoint the future. Our actions today will determine the well-being of future generations. We all know this. Thank you very much.
I wish to thank the President of the Republic of Ecuador for the statements just made. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of Botswana to introduce an address by the head of state.
Mister President, it is a great honor for me to introduce the pre-recorded statement by His Excellency Dr. Mofetzi Eric Gaveti Masisi, President of the Republic of Botswana.
Your Excellency, Mister Volkan Boskir, President of the General Assembly, Your Excellencies, heads of state and government, distinguished ladies and gentlemen, allow me at the outset to congratulate the Chair of the Non-Aligned Movement and President of the Republic of Azerbaijan, His Excellency Ilham Aliyev, for the wisdom to convene this very important special session of the United Nations General Assembly on the Covid nineteen pandemic. Covid nineteen continues to have devastating and far-reaching effects on our lives and livelihoods. Being part of the global village, my country, Botswana, has not been spared. While we attained a certain level of success at the onset of the pandemic with relatively lower Covid nineteen cases, much like the rest of the world, we are now, however, also realizing a surge in local cases. As at nineteenth November twenty twenty, a cumulative eight thousand five hundred and thirty-one Botswana had tested positive with eight hundred and eight active cases, while seven thousand six hundred and ninety-two had recovered from the virus. We have also unfortunately recorded thus far thirty-one Covid nineteen-related deaths. Mister President, it was not so long ago that our former president, Dr. Festus Khuntibani Mukhai, appealed for the assistance of the international community to fight HIV and AIDS. The moral response that helped us contain the effects of the HIV and AIDS is now needed to ensure that together we defend our nations and peoples against the harsh effects of the Covid nineteen. It has reminded us of the core values that founded the United Nations, which in its preamble, and I quote, "reaffirms faith in fundamental human rights, in the dignity and worth of the human person, in the equal rights of men and women and of nations large and small." Close quote. Mister President, the enormity of the Covid nineteen scourge has necessitated that we adopt robust public health interventions to enhance our detection, containment and preventative initiatives. My government has had to introduce measures that at times severe to minimize the impact of the virus on our still-developing economy. These include, amongst others, public education and awareness, screening at all points of entry for early detection and diagnosis, isolation of suspected cases, as well as continued emphasis on the key WHO protocols of social distancing, hand hygiene and wearing face masks in public spaces. We also continue to restrict and advise against unnecessary travel within and outside the country. These measures have nonetheless come with notable negative economic consequences, particularly on the small businesses. In an effort to mitigate some of these negative effects, especially on trade and tourism, we opened our borders from the first of December twenty twenty. In addition to enacting policies to support business through tax concessions, guarantee of loans from commercial banks and access to credit, my government has also established a national Covid nineteen relief fund. The fund, which has benefited from our generous partners and Botswana at large, has been instrumental in bridging the finance gap for the provision of basic necessities such as food baskets and ensuring access to water and sanitation. Covid nineteen has further exposed our over-reliance on imported food and other commodities, including critical oil resources. Being landlocked and heavily reliant on our neighbors for trade, we are a perfect example of the importance of international solidarity. Botswana is very fortunate in this regard to have had solid support of its neighbors in the Sadek Legion to ensure continuity of trade. in the Sadek Legion to ensure continuity of trade across borders. The leadership shown by the United Nations, especially the WHO, World Health Organization, and the support received from friends across nations has also been critical in ensuring technical assistance for our health workers, as well as procurement of the personal protection equipment and testing kits. I wish to reiterate the appeal for continued assistance, particularly on ensuring uninterrupted availability of PPEs. Mr. President, despite these measures, the apparent devastating effects of the pandemic, particularly among the most vulnerable, including women and children, cannot be ignored. The higher rates of gender-based violence have exposed societal ills that require our attention. We are therefore grateful for the United Nations Secretary-General's appeal for an immediate ceasefire in all corners of the globe, a step that will go a long way in curbing violence against women and girls, including in their homes. We also fully align with the Non-Aligned Movement's declaration adopted at the summit held on the 4th of May 2020, which, among others, established a task force to develop a database on basic humanitarian and medical needs of member states. My country further supports the call for universal affordable access to COVID-19 vaccines and therapeutics and thus commenced the World Health Assembly's adoption of a resolution in May 2020 calling for universal access to COVID-19 drugs. We also welcome the COVAX facility initiative, which seeks to ensure that developing countries will have immediate access to a vaccine, particularly targeting the most vulnerable. Mr. President, the world at large is grappling with the socioeconomic effects of the COVID-19 at a time when we are also striving to achieve the SDG 30 goal targets. It is therefore imperative that we leverage on responsible technologies to provide services and scale up on implementation of SDGs. Mr. President, as I conclude, I wish to take this opportunity to express our heartfelt sympathies and condolences to all those who have lost loved ones to this pandemic. Equal appreciation goes to the frontline workers who risk their lives daily in the fight against COVID-19. Their agility and unwavering commitment embody the true spirit of humanity and is our source of optimism. I am convinced that if we combine all our efforts, we can overcome the challenge of the COVID-19 pandemic and recover as a stronger United Nations. I thank you for your attention.
I wish to thank the President of the Republic of Botswana for the statement just made. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of Monaco to introduce an address by the head of state.
Merci, Monsieur le Président.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have the honor to introduce the prerecovid message of His Excellency Prince Albert of Monaco. President of the General Assembly, Secretary-General, ladies and gentlemen, heads of state and government, excellences, ladies and gentlemen. The nature of the crisis led us to convene this special session of the General Assembly. I have the honor of taking part. Allow me to take this opportunity to warmly thank once again the Secretary-General, as well as all UN staff and its agencies who have worked and continue to work relentlessly to face this pandemic. Through the 22 summary notes and the global response of the United Nations to COVID-19, Mr. Gutierrez has laid out the lines for a geographic, economic and social response and by adopting the comprehensive and coordinated response to the coronavirus disease. Six months after the pandemic started and this organization now, the special session, a year after the virus appeared, should be a warning to us all. We cannot be satisfied with this. Mr. President, like a number of European countries, the principality is affected by the second wave of the pandemic, which has already affected so many people in so many countries throughout the world. My government is following the circulation of the virus in Monaco on a daily basis. We do this with a dual objective, to ensure that our healthcare system is not overloaded and to limit the effects on our daily life. This pandemic proves the fundamental utility of vaccination. We also need to ensure that we provide continuity in vaccinations. In parallel, we are mobilizing to ensure that there is equitable access to all vaccines against COVID-19. That's why I wanted my country to contribute to international efforts in this area, particularly through the initiative "Access to COVID-19 Tools Accelerator", led by the WHO and its partners. Moreover, we know that it's imperative to build health systems that are more solid and to improve our capacity to address emergency situations and be better prepared for the arrival of future pandemics. The IPBS published last October an alarming report showing the link between emerging illnesses and the destruction of biodiversity. As indicated in the report, around 60% of infectious human diseases are of animal origin. The health of the environment and human health are therefore very closely linked, and that's why we have to deal with these subjects together. Also, by reinforcing the management systems for health crises, it's fundamental that we develop a fundamental preventive approach that's based on preserving the environment. Here, I'm happy to see that a number of countries have made the protection of the environment an important part of their recovery projects. We also have to reconcile an economic recovery with preservation of health. That's why I ensured that the government of Monaco in September 2020 had a recovery plan that was pragmatic, could develop further and that was compatible with current health measures in force. Support to enterprises, businesses and workers has involved the setting up of several funds covering all sectors of activity, promoting investment and covering the energy transition and the digital transformation. Before the COVID-19 crisis, this last transformation has been speeded up due to the confinement that was put in place. However, the deployment of digital technologies must not be limited to the state and companies. It must have come to other sectors as well. We saw that the closing of schools, for example, showed inequal access of families to digital technology. It's clear that if you don't have a good internet connection, you cannot continue to learn. The closing of schools does not just mean an interruption in education. It's also a challenge in terms of food and nutrition. In many countries, families count very much on the meals provided by the school. That's why, in order to ensure that quality education continues for all, the government of Monaco wanted to keep the schools and canteens open whilst ensuring that there were sanitary conditions in place. And finally, women have been the most impacted by the consequences of the pandemic. We're seeing more and more victims of domestic violence, which is absolutely intolerable. In this regard, the Monaco Committee for the Promotion and Protection of Women's Rights launched a new campaign. It stresses violence within the family and its consequences, both on the victims as well as on the direct witnesses of that violence, in particular, children. Mr. President, we see the challenges that we have to overcome. They are multiple, and only a coordinated global response will enable us to fight successfully against this disease and its consequences. This health crisis is really testing the multilateral system that we've spent so many years building. And it's for this reason that since the beginning of the crisis, I wanted to join my voice with those of other leaders to launch an appeal for solidarity and for cooperation. By revealing the faults in our system, COVID-19 causes to action and offers us a unique opportunity to start again on a better basis. We therefore have the opportunity to build this world of solidarity that is safe and resilient that we've promised to future generations. Let us not fail to seize this opportunity. I thank you for your attention.
I wish to thank the sovereign prince of Monaco for the statement just made. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of Iraq to introduce an address by the head of state.
Shukran Sayid al-Rais, Yusirani Anuqadim.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have the pleasure to present Dr. Bokhan Sarah, President of Iraq's pre-recorded video message to the Angus on COVID-19. Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, may God's peace be upon you. The meetings of this special session of the General Assembly of the United Nations addressing the COVID-19 pandemic are an important opportunity, very important opportunity, to continue our collective efforts virtually to address this unprecedented crisis for the international community. An opportunity that confirms that we really are one family in our suffering brought about by this pandemic, but also in our collective efforts to arrest this pandemic and rid our planet of it. In my statement at the last meeting of the General Assembly, we said that if the pandemic continues in one village, one city, the whole of humanity will be threatened by this pandemic, which has no borders. At the beginning, at the outset, we repeat that collective suffering therefore requires collective solutions as well. This meeting is timely because it reaffirms our commitment to collective solutions to the pandemic. Our meeting is also happening at a time when all countries of the world, their peoples and governments, are following the information provided by companies, laboratories, by researchers with regard to the imminent release of a, well, several actually, vaccines against coronavirus. We believe that access for all countries to treatment should be a priority issue. It's also essential that we guarantee fair distribution and that we limit the trade aspects of all this and therefore limit also political divergence on this issue. We also need to take into account the varying economic and financial capacities of countries and adopt measures necessary to ensure that vaccines can reach a lot of countries that don't even have means of transport or distribution that would be adequate. In principle, we are amongst the countries where the governments will buy the vaccine and ensure that it will be freely distributed to citizens despite, as everyone would know, a very difficult economic situation in my country. My country has known 17 years of war against terrorism, large-scale war against terrorism. This continues. And there is also the previous dictatorship that really damaged our institutions and institutions such as hospitals. We also have seen a drop in the price of oil, whereas oil is the main source of the state's income. We hope that friendly countries will stand shoulder to shoulder with us to respond to our needs for the vaccine. And we hope that our circumstances will be taken into account and understood and that we will be able to benefit from the aid necessary to address the pandemic. Despite our limited resources, relatively speaking, we have been able to contain the effects of the pandemic by the sacrifices of our doctors and other healthcare professionals and citizens. We've also had the support provided by international institutions and certain friendly countries. We, relatively speaking, have been able to alleviate the effects of the pandemic, but it's a pandemic that is a constant threat for our community and our society. And therefore, it's a concern that we must address with all of our friends to ensure that we can provide our citizens with access to the vaccine. We are convinced of the importance of the results of these meetings in order to strengthen international action and the action of international agencies to guarantee vaccines for everyone that needs them and that don't necessarily have the wherewithal to pay for them. So in the spirit of optimism, we would recall that the vaccine undoubtedly is important, but it's not enough alone. The international community also needs to develop strict policies to protect the environment. We also need to have measures to ensure technological and industrial development to ensure the survival of life on the planet. We need to safeguard and protect our planet. That is a collective human responsibility that we have to take very seriously. The United Nations organization can help and can establish an ideal environment, a dialogue for agreements that would protect life on our planet. And once again, we'd like to thank the Presidency of the General Assembly and the Secretary-General and all those that have been involved in preparing this special session. And we wish speedy recovery to all those that have been affected by the pandemic, wherever they may be. And we hope that our world will very quickly come back to an even keel, that people will be able to travel, work and live safely and in prosperity. May the peace of God be with you. Thank you.
I wish to thank the President of the Republic of Iraq for the statement just made. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of the Marshall Islands to introduce an address by the head of state.
Mr. President, I have the distinct honor to introduce a prerecorded message, statement by the President of the Marshall Islands, David Kabua. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. President, Mr. Secretary-General, excellences. It is my honor to bring to you the warm greetings of Yahweh on behalf of the people and government of the Republic of the Marshall Islands. I align my statement with that of Belize on behalf of the Alliance of Small Island States and of Tubalu on behalf of the Pacific Island Forum. While rigorous border screening has effectively addressed risks as we slowly repatriate those stranded abroad, our national borders remain in near isolation. We are thankful for our health and security, but to do so, we will continue to pay a very heavy toll. Enforcing our isolation has severely impacted our primary economic engine of fisheries and placed several restrictions on imports and a near halt to air travel. Our substantial population abroad has also been deeply and disproportionately affected by COVID, both in economy and mortality. While as a nation and people, we will continue to meet this challenge with all our might and will, our unique situation is incredibly difficult to sustain deep into the future. As the world moves with cautious optimism towards building back better, it is vital that all nations use this as an opportunity to pursue and achieve enhanced ambition on emission reductions and to boost resilience to climate impacts. We have a key opportunity to turn commitments to the Paris Agreement and the SDGs into a firm reality. Our attention and that of the world is now closely focused on vaccination, and we are thankful where fully documented and safe candidates have appeared. I welcome the sentiments from the UN General Assembly, recently affirmed by the G20 regarding the expectation of equitable vaccine distribution. I remain cautiously optimistic that these noble sentiments will turn into action and commitment to truly ensure that no one is left behind. All nations should be particularly regarded of attempts to trade easy influence or political favor for medical assistance. It is important that the most vulnerable nations and the most vulnerable populations It is important that the most vulnerable nations and the most vulnerable populations within those nations realize open and accountable access to vaccines and medical protection. Mr President, we are particularly pleased that our closest partners in the Pacific have already committed to assisting us with timely delivery of vaccines as they are available early next year in a manner which protects our entire population. Similar commitments are already underway to assist our neighbouring Pacific Island countries. On the basis of this commitment, we look forward to moving towards gradually reopening our borders and scaling back our isolation. Like many in the world, we are facing the difficult task of rebuilding and restructuring. The international system and the most importantly, member states should search deep for the lessons learned. Where multilateral cooperations may have proved weak in the face of national self-interest, the world should not again face such a common crisis without more effective tools and the political will to use them. As a world united by shared challenges, we should all strive to emerge stronger in health and economy. This will be a vital opportunity to address critical flaws during rebuilding, but only if we all seek to make this opportunity a reality. It is particularly important, not only that the most vulnerable are safeguarded, but also that the international system takes the time to carefully understand the unique circumstances and challenges, in particular for small island developing states. I can only hope that come next September, I will be able to stand shoulder to shoulders with fellow leaders in New York as a truly United Nations. Thank you and kumon dada.
I wish to thank the President of the Republic of the Marshall Islands for the statement just made. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of Kenya to introduce an address by the head of state.
Thank you, Mr President. It is now my honour to introduce His Excellency Mr Uru Kenyatta, the President of the Republic of Kenya, to address the very first special session of the General Assembly in response to the Covid nineteen pandemic through a pre-recorded statement. Mr President, the video is missing just the first part of it, allow me to just fill in the gap. The President of the Seventy-Fifth Session of the United Nations General Assembly, His Excellency Wakan Boskill, Secretary General of the United Nations and His Excellency Antonio Gutierrez, excellences, distinguished delegates, let me take this opportunity, Mr President, to congratulate you so far on a productive and successful Seventy-Fifth Session, especially during the midst of such an extraordinary and unexpected era in our lives. I assure you of Kenya's full as well as constructive support. In the past few months, the Covid nineteen pandemic has indiscriminately affected all of our societies, disrupted our economies, shut down our schools and robbed our health sectors to the core. Covid nineteen exposed our unpreparedness and taught us to be better equipped for than expected. It has accelerated efforts to construct more resilient, stronger institution in an all-out effort to build back better and again what is lost. I thank you, Mr President.
Been greatly affected by Covid nineteen pandemic. Our first case of the novel coronavirus disease was reported on the thirteenth of March twenty twenty, and since then, this disease has spread to all the forty-seven counties of our republic. To date, Kenya has reported eighty-one thousand one hundred and two confirmed cases, of which fifty-three thousand five hundred and twenty-six are recoveries. Regrettably, one thousand four hundred and twenty-seven persons have succumbed to the disease. Thirty-one of these were healthcare workers, heroes who paid the ultimate price so that tens of thousands would be saved. In response to the Covid nineteen pandemic, my government moved fast and adopted a multi-agency approach. We established the national emergency-
We'd get to the picture that the Americans are demanding some action on these issues. Certainly doesn't appear that in the next Congress, anything will change. Yesterday, the Democrats released next year's House schedule. The average number of days working in the first seshken of the past four Congresses have been a hundred and thirty-four days. You would think with all the challenges that this country has, that we'd probably maybe even work at least more, or at the very least, that same amount of time. Nope. Democrats think Congress needs a twenty-five percent reduction. Yes, you don't even have to show up for work. Sixty Democrats yesterday, one-third of them didn't show up for work, just voted by proxy and still got paid, and now they find out they don't even have to work as much as they did Congresses before. A twenty-five percent reduction with only scheduled a hundred and one days. It will probably become the laziest Congress we have ever had. With that, let's open it up for questions. Yes, ma'am?
So the Democrat in Iowa's second congressional race, she expects to be filing a petition that announced that she will come at least under the congressional-
She filed with the House Administration, it's the wrong place to go. If you have these challenges, you should go to court. Why would she avoid going to court? This has already been through a recount, the recount has finished. The Republican, Mary Ann Miller Meeks, is the winner, and I expect her to be seated come January.
But if the Speaker does take it up and if the committee does take it up, well, we see something similar that we saw in nineteen eighty-five where-
The Bloody Eight of Indiana, where power corrupts absolutely, where they took away the voice of the American public who voted for an individual, and the Democrats sitting in the House decided who won and lost? Let's hope it does not come to that. That should never return itself ever in this country again.
Can you take the Attorney General's word that there was no widespread voter fraud that would have changed the outcome of the election?
I'm sorry, when did the Attorney General say that?
He did an interview with the AP where he said that-
I haven't seen the interview, sorry.
Are Republicans going to be supportive of the NDAA if it doesn't include the language to the President, like on their own social media?
We continue to work on the NDAA. We know that we will get an NDA done, as we've done for the last sixty years, but we also know that Section two thirty of what has happened, what I stated back in October, it needs to be repealed. These technology companies are not acting in the manner of why two thirty was created to give them protections. If they want to pick and choose what goes on, as we see on a daily basis, they don't need that protection any longer. Yes, sir.
Joe Biden says that on his first day in office, he'll use Title IX to give transgender students access to sports, bathrooms and locker rooms in accordance with their gender identity in all federally funded schools. Do you think that he has the power to unilaterally do that, and do you agree with that?
Let's wait until who's sworn in and we can discuss that. Yes.
Covid relief, I mean, give us a timeline, when do you think it needs to be done? McConnell sounded relatively optimistic this morning, Schumer less so. Do you have a, I mean, the government runs out of money next week, so just-
Yeah, I mean, we have December eleventh, so you have a date. That's government funding, though, that's not Covid. For too long, Pelosi has used just for a political game, harming the economy, picking individuals to harm simply for the fact that she wanted an outcome to an election. The election is over, so I'm more optimistic now that we can get something done. But unfortunately, more people are hurting. Forty times, the Democrats had an opportunity that they voted no on. Working with President Trump, with Mnuchin and with McConnell, I feel we've got a better opportunity now than at any time. I thank those members on the Democratic side who said they would sign a discharge petition. If they would sign that discharge petition, I bet you we'd get a Covid bill that day.
Do you, and on government funding, do you foresee an omnibus coming together, or do you think it'll be a CR this morning?